That is the mic, so.
It depends whether you're from a country you're from.
Geez.
It depends whether you're in either city or suburb.
That's how they time is.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen meeting of April 10, 2018. If we could please start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
We just stood a flag of the United States of America into the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda are public announcements and comments. Is there anybody here, Vida?
So, we have Joe Tierney to thank for another $100,000 being added to the out-of-control school committee budget last night, more than $70,000 of that being added to our share. And so, our share, as I understand it anyway, will be $2,136,767. That's including, of course, the 2.5% contribution. And Dennis is minus $138,374. If you guys think that you can still deal with those people reasonably and change anything in that formula, I think you're really dreaming. Because how can Dennis do any better anywhere? They certainly can't do any better than that. And to think that at least there was a chance this time around to get a program, a coherent program into place, to see if they could get the special ed children, you know, moving in the right direction. And no, there were a couple of people from Dennis who were always adding, subtracting. They just wanted to keep the social workers in place. And then our three other candidates besides Joe were joined by Jim Dykman. And if Joe had voted with them, at least we would have had something for the children, I think. Because that program sounded to me as though, you know, but then, not only that, but he then ends up voting for something to add $100,000. Excuse me? To the budget. This is, and I already told you that the building, the Matta Keys Building Committee is totally in the hands of Dennis. This is another one that Joe chairs. Honestly, I mean, I just don't know what to say anymore. But be that as it may. Then I want to go to the wastewater management. What kind of a presentation was that at the three-town meeting? That no figures were given whatsoever and buried in a footnote is a statement that if you do as we recommend you do, you will save $100 million. $100 million from what figure? I mean, if a child had an assignment to do a research paper and came in with something like that, I would hope that that child would be marked down. This was so unprofessional. And how can you continue dealing with that man again? That so-called consultant who I have on good authority is, has become a multimillionaire on his consulting jobs here on the Cape. Honestly, I just don't see how you can actually, because do you have any idea what he's proposing in terms of numbers for this town? Because the original one a year ago was not even a warmed-over figure from seven years ago. And, I mean, in the meantime.
Can you wrap it up, please?
Yes. I tried to get somebody to put it on the record, you know, that the total figure that had been bandied about seven years ago of $8 billion for the whole Cape had been brought down to below $4 billion, I guess. And we're not getting, not even a penny savings, as far as you can tell from last year's figures. And of course, he didn't give any figures at all this year. So, anyway.
Good evening. My name is Susan Brito, and I live in West Yarmouth. I just have a few comments I want to make this evening. I want to call your attention, as you all know, you probably have a copy of the February 6 letter that Vineyard Wind sent to NEPA. And on page three of that letter, I noticed that they self-proclaim that your request for independent studies are outside the scope of NEPA authority, and actually go on to say that your requests are unrelated to project impact. So, I went back and reread your January 23 letter, and actually, I don't see anything wrong with asking about updating the Army Corps of Engineers study, or asking for impact analysis on the base gallop situation, or even getting an impact analysis on property values. You know, I bring this up not to talk about the substance, but to talk about the attitude. This is not an attitude of cooperation and partnership that they have publicly proclaimed that they are in. And if this is the attitude they're going to adopt when they need something from you, I question what their attitude is going to be once they get, if they ever get, a host agreement with the town of Yarmouth. It is difficult to imagine how that host agreement actually can be enforced. I've read it several times, and I don't see any enforcement mechanism on the part of the selectmen to try to enforce some of the provisions in the host agreement. So, that's item number one. Item number two, I just want to quote, this is from a letter to the editor that another West Yarmouth resident, Arthur Warren, just recently sent to the Cape Cod Times. Again, it's about Vineyard Wind. And he gave me permission to quote him. He said Vineyard Wind asserts that its Cape Cod business, which will provide extensive environmental studies, which on February 6, they said they wouldn't, they're going to create jobs, provide massive tax revenue, remediate all concerns, reduce electric rates, provide subsidies for low-income housing, and repair damage to Lewis Bay. So, they're acknowledging that there will be damage to Lewis Bay. Arthur goes on to say this is nothing but political posturing and the type of thing that would be said during a competition in order to win a competition. And then the last thing, and this is actually a good thing, I would like to publicly congratulate our neighbor and my colleague, Chris Greeley. Chris was just selected by the State Commission on the Status of Women as one of their 2018 unsung heroines for her endless devotion to time, her endless dedication, time and talent to volunteer efforts here in the town of Yarmouth, which we have all benefited from. So, congratulations, please. Thank you very much.
My name is Bob Pelmary, and I'm a member of the Energy Committee, but I am speaking for myself this evening. I'd like to speak in support of Yarmouth becoming a green community, as indicated by the Commonwealth's Green Communities Act of 2008. In the eyes of many, the term "green" in that act refers not just to a color, but a political ideology often characterized by a Birkenstock-wearing tree hugger. However, for me, the green of the act refers to the word as it is found in another word, "greenback." Therefore, I think Yarmouth should become a green community, in capella letters, in order to receive those greenbacks to make Yarmouth a greener community than it already is. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tom Nickenall, Precinct 3, speaking in behalf of the Chamber of Commerce tonight. Three announcements and one comment. Thank you. This Saturday, our Department of Public Works in the chamber will be having our annual cleanup through the Town of Yarmouth. As you know, my saying is "Earth Day is every day," not just one day, but our extra efforts will go out this Saturday. You can meet here at Town Hall at 9:00. Instructions will be given out, bags will be given out, and off we go to clean up our community, which we all dear, love, and respect. My next comment is for the wonderful volunteers we have in town. It's about 300-plus. We have a notice that on May 2, there'll be a breakfast in appreciation for these wonderful people at 8:30, I believe, at the St. Paris Life Center. So, if you can make it, please do. It's a great event. We all get to volunteer our time to volunteer and talk to one another, which is great. And then on April 25, we have Candidates Night. And as you know, our town cannot run without great selectmen that we have. We have two selectmen coming up. We have a school committee member and a housing authority. And then my comment would be on the Drive-In Site Committee, which they've been doing a great job. I'm kind of hoping when they come and report to you folks at the end of the month that the interim task, which you asked them to do, they can finalize and put a number on what it would take to give a fluff and puff to the site. There are some people interested in coming to Yarmouth and doing some special events there. And I think it's very important. It's part of our economic development, which if you can bring 3,000 people to town, and they're going to do four events this year, that's a lot of people that will come to town. And you never know what happens after that. So, thank you.
Hi, Sharon Wymer. I had a couple of comments, and one involved the schools, and one involved the, well, not just one comment about the schools, but also the other would be the stretch code, which was spoken about by the gentleman from the Energy. I've been attending school committee meetings, finance committee meetings, a number of meetings, and it's always an education. And one trying to understand budgets is not an easy thing to do if you don't attend some of the subcommittees and see what's going on. But this has sort of been going a long time. One thing that sort of upsets me a lot as a community member is sometimes the comments that are made that are inaccurate. And a lot of times, I'm wondering whether they are said because of lack of information, or whether it's just to present someone's position in a good position, a good way. Hopefully, it's the first, that it's a lack of information. And a number of things that have been said about the school budget process is, first of all, the school budgets were asked by the town administrator and the finance director to participate in the zero-based budget process. So, they did respond and said that they have done that. So, they're one of the departments that is going to be rotating with the zero-based budget. Second of all, that's often forgotten. The other part about the present-day budget is that there have been 20 positions cut from the existing budget, which brought it down from the original high-budget presentation, as well as last night's meeting, which cut one social worker. And in exchange, they, in exchange for some of that cost, or the savings, I should say, implemented what the superintendent was trying to do, which was to answer some of the concerns about special needs and what was talked about by Vida. So, it became a compromise kind of position that they took. But I'm not sure the decision for the need for doing this was fully reported. Right now, in this year's budget, they have a freeze on at the schools. They can't go and spend any money without approval. And so, out of their budget lines, they can't do that. Because 11 students with special needs have cost the school department this year over $500,000. So, when you have a budget that doesn't include properly the development of special needs and out-of-district placements and in-district placements as well is part of the problem that's needed. I should give you just a quick history. Years ago, special needs students were put in institutions. It was, there are a lot of horrible stories about that. They came out of that, and the schools became responsible for them. But not all the money that is needed to take care of students was dispersed to handle that. They did that because they knew they'd have a better environment. And in fact, they do. They have more empathetic teachers who can provide better support. And so, that's been the history. The reason for the social learning teacher, behavioral teachers is what I'm going to call them. I can't get that new lingo down.
Social emotional.
Thank you. But basically, behavioral-ish teachers were felt to be needed to try to keep, there are two reasons, to keep the students that were being placed in out-of-district. And so, the cost, to try to control that cost, that would impact, on a yearly basis, would impact the other types of great things the D.Y. is doing. They have a great music program. They have great arts programs. You don't want to take from that, because more and more people will leave from this new world of charter schools and, which I have a comment about, but, and the funding difficulties that all of that brings. So, over the years, there is this struggle. And we, as a community, need to try to figure out how we're going to look at that a little bit differently than what we've done. There are structural problems with this funding. And yes, if you don't get the same amount of regional transportation, it affects your budget. To say that it's irrelevant is wrong. And that has been said here many meetings ago. And that kind of comment just is a little bothersome. So, 300,000 to 350,000, whatever the exact figure is, for regional transportation, not having it, losing it, has a direct effect on a person's budget. I think it would matter to you folks. So, and I want to say, just from history-wise, it used to be that this town would run special town meetings to issue, to decide upon where all the free cash that you develop goes. And it used to be the schools would have some kind of participation in that, because that money was never part of the discussion. And usually, it was, maybe you might get some capital out of that. And this year, I see free cashes. I don't know, you've got 300, no, is it $3 million that's going to, from free cash out of your budget. And I don't want to take anything away from you, but I want it to be fair and to be talking about what the issues are. And maybe we need to sit down and talk amongst a group to try to figure out how are we going to keep moving on? Because this is a difficult problem. And I've been doing some research, and obviously, the two-regional district is extremely hard. You're having difficulty with your partner. At some point back in '07, '08, you changed the regional agreement. That unfortunately started a problem, I think. So, I know you're trying very hard to fix it. They're in the catbird seat. You know, they are in the catbird seat from all those changes. Mistakes are made. Somehow, we need to figure out how we appeal to their better sense. But if we can't, then you have to make decisions based on that. So, I am sorry, I'm sort of all over the place. But there's history. By the way, when you, when we regionalized in the '70s, I think it was the late '70s, the law required, required the regional school district to take the more generous distribution of health benefits. So, this town was 50-50. Dennis was 60-40. You could be mad at Dennis now, instead of the school system, because it wasn't their fault. And furthermore, as far as I know, dental, dental has always been offered in the schools. And I called the Town of Dennis today to see if they're, they do. And yes, Dennis does dental. So, maybe that came along with it as well. So, please don't blame the schools for what was required by the state of Massachusetts when you regionalize. And you folks agreed to regionalize back in the '70s, based on the incentive of regional transportation being 100% less any school child lives within the 1.5 mile than they were supposed to walk. So, I'm sorry, I'm all over the place. But there are lots of issues. And I just hope that we're fair in our discussions about what's going on. Someone got up here and talked about, you know, when the schools are here, your health has gone up 6%. Shame on you.
So has the towns.
I know. And that's what should have been said. That's what should have been said, in my mind. Second of all, I guess the stretch code. And so, I was surprised to hear the vote from your committee on this, because I can't imagine why, in fact, I know from attending some of the building committee meetings, that the new school, the new school that's going to be built, whether it's for grades, whether it's just Matta Keys and you go it alone, or whether it's shared, wants to be, or should be, energy efficient. Now, I know from talking to Carol and Ken, that's what they want, because they need that in order to protect their budgets. So, I'm hoping you might change your mind when you get to the town floor, or maybe investigate whether the district itself can vote the district code for the new school. I know it really doesn't affect them in terms of their attitude, because they want it to be efficient. But, you know, it does, I guess, offer some grant money, too. So, I'm not sure that you want to pass that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Chris?
Good evening. Christine Greeley from West Yarmouth.
Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you. Actually, I was shocked and surprised. But I also have to say, I think that they sort of accept it on behalf of so many people in this community and in the state who work so hard on a daily basis, volunteering and wanting to do better for their community and for the citizens who live there. And I think that's sort of the guiding principle behind it all. So, it's sort of, I accept it on their behalf, too.
You can't pass that off. You know, great leadership is really appreciated and is needed from the community. And you're a star, a star example of that.
Well, thank you very much. As I said, I'm embarrassed. But anyway, I am here actually because of the citizens. And I think that what we represent and what we have, a lot of people who for many, many decades have lived here, loved this community. And in particular, when I talk about Lewis Bay, you know, 36-year history of being down on that water and knowing and loving it. And very, very concerned about how things are progressing, about the whole issue of Vineyard Wind. And I think that it's very disheartening, particularly, I know that I have attended every single open house, every single event they've had, including at the senior center and that. And to sort of find retired legislators as hired lobbyists. We're looking at a multimillionaire, multimillion-dollar corporation, foreign entity, who basically have said it's cheaper to come in through Lewis Bay, for them, and who sort of live with the consequences of throwing some very short money, that some people would say, oh, it's great to get this money into the town. And I'm saying it's not. We're looking at a 30-year process with a corporation that could go bankrupt, could leave you holding things, who have been very unwilling to even, as I think Susan described in her letter of the sixth, even acknowledge the concerns the town has about that bay. We know that it's going to be a long, long time of cooperation and work that you're going to have to do with the town of Barnstable. And I will tell you that our neighborhood associations will stand aligned with you as you do that work. But we're very, very much opposed to Vineyard Wind, and we have not changed our opinions in any way, shape, or form on that. I also need to point out to you that there are a series of hearings and comment periods I wanted to sort of get out into the public. And that is that the U.S. Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, also known as BOM, is, has a comment period going on currently that will end April 30. But in addition, on Wednesday, April 18, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Doubletree Hotel over on Route 28, INO Road, we'll be doing work there. They do both the present, they have also open house sort of thing going on 6:00 to 9:00, but the presentation and question and answer will start at 6:30. And that's Wednesday, April 18. If I remove my eyeglasses, I read better. And then, secondly, the, and they will be dealing very specifically with the offshore kinds of things that are going on, including the placement of the wind farm. And it is our position, out of the neighborhood associations, and we believe it should be the position of this town, no landing in Lewis Bay. Certainly, they can consider landing in Cubbles Beach, but probably much, much better is Brayton Point. And I think there's a lot of research and indication that that's where they all, any of the wind farms locating out there should be. The second part of it is that the Energy, the Massachusetts Energy Facility Sighting Board, the EFSP, will be reviewing the entirety of the on-land portion of the transmission line and portions of the offshore portion of the transmission line, but not the sighting of the offshore wind farm. And they have opened a comment period that will end May 8. And then, on top of it all, they will be holding a public comment hearing on Tuesday, April 24, at 7:00 p.m. at Barnstable High School. And so, that are the two things, the two events, April 18 at the Doubletree from 6:00 to 9: with the federal government, and basically on the offshore pieces of it, including the landing. And then, on the, the state will be holding it on Tuesday, the 24th, at 7:00 p.m. at Barnstable High School, basically on the onshore things. And we continue to have some real concerns about some of the implications for the landing coming up Higgins Crow. And when you take a look at the size of the casemats and the things that they have to sink in the roadways, I think our future sewer-ing projects on our own utility uses and that may be seriously impacted by their having gotten priority in on our roads. But I urge you, the public on these, on the comment periods and on the hearings. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to take one, one.
And I will say, it has nothing to do with wind, with green energy, or anything else. Go do it, but just don't land in Lewis Bay.
It's amazing how important energy becomes. And I agree, every day should be Earth Day. I'm just here because Energy Committee listened variously in our different homes to the meeting of two weeks ago. And we didn't feel that the Board of Selectmen got all its questions about the stretch code adequately answered, in particular, the one about affordable housing. So, what we've done is we've dug in, and we've done some research. And we've put together not only the building code, energy efficiency requirements, which as far as we can tell, apply to all 40B housing, but we've also done FAQs, you know, the 10 most frequently asked and answered questions, well, asked anyway, that we thought, we thought needed answered. And we, and we hope you'll find this helpful. And we hope that the people of Yarmouth will find it helpful. Yarmouthians who are here tonight, this is Yarmouthians who are here tonight, this is the loud yellow handout over there, if you're interested, that's the FAQs. We're going to be doing further research on this because we really want to advocate for the very best energy policy for Yarmouth. But we are also aware of the R-word, the resource word. And if you want to see how seriously we take that, take a look at the date on your reused folder. And I think you'll see we're very serious about that. There were questions that Eric had, quite logically, about the positive pressure within houses and the negative pressure of large wind events like a hurricane outside. We are only scratching the surface of that. And we're finding that the best case studies seem to be in Florida, which is coastal and hurricane country because there don't seem to be any cases here in coastal Massachusetts. So we have for him tonight a few popular press things on Habitat for Humanities homes and how they did in Hurricane Andrew. But we promise that we'll be working more on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Okay, that will be the end of public comment. I appreciate everybody's comments. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Stone, the appointments chair.
Thank you. Peter, you want to come up?
You can.
Oh, receipt, yeah. Thank you. Peter, you want to identify yourself, please?
Peter Lucido, owner, Sea Dog Brew Pub.
Okay, Peter, I'm going to read the ad and then you can proceed. "The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority, has received an application from Peter Lucido, manager of Sea Dog Brew Pub for special wine and malt and entertainment licenses for a fundraising event to benefit Rhett Syndrome. The fundraiser will be held under a tent in the parking lot of 23 whites past South Yarmouth, Saturday, May 5, 2018, between the hours of 5:00 and 9:00 p.m. Entertainment will include amplified music and a TV under the tent until 8:30 p.m. Hearing will be held on Thursday, April 10 in the hearing room at Town Hall 1146, Route 28, South Yarmouth. The Selectmen's meeting begins at 6:00 p.m. Written comments will be accepted in the Selectmen's office until 4:30 on Friday, April 6, 2018. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing."
Thank you very much. This event is actually very special for a lot of us just because of, with the Rhett disease, which has, actually is a neurological disorder for females after three weeks of birth. Jill Andres is a Yarmouth resident. She goes to D Y. She has Rhett. And, you know, he's a family friend and, you know, this is a great benefit for them. But also, they're $25,000 away from raising a million. And so we got together with them and with the special days coming up with the Kentucky Derby and with Cinco de Mayo being on the same day, we decided to throw a little fundraiser event under the tent, similar to the Septemberfest event we had, which was very successful. And it was a very, it was brand smooth as could be. It was family-friendly. It was a great event. The music will be Mark Hennessy. It'll be only acoustic, so we won't have a band or anything like that. And we actually will be, we're probably ending the event earlier than 8:30. I just gave a little extra just for cleanup. But that's about it.
Okay. Before I go to the board, is there anyone in the audience that would like to be heard on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom Nickenow, President of Yarmouth Chamber of Commerce. And Mr. Lucido's done a wonderful job in the past on these events. And we like to encourage this one also. And we wish you the best of luck, sir.
Thank you. Anybody in the board have any questions or comments?
The only question I have is, so it will be similar in terms of maintaining the perimeter and making sure that the alcohol is not served outside or taken outside of the area?
Yes. We learned the first time, we're actually going to have one entrance that's actually going to be access into the pub and into the event. So we'll have security barriers all around the tent. And so there'll be only one entrance, period.
And your written submission, you do have a little paragraph on crowd management saying there'll be, you're estimating 200 attendees. There'll be people at the entrance checking IDs to ensure that people drinking are of proper age. Risk bans will be provided for those who are 21 and over. And employees will be walking the perimeter of the property, making sure people do not leave the area without alcohol.
Correct.
They're correct.
Correct.
All right. I'm very familiar with this family. Actually, they lived right next door to me for many years. They are wonderful, wonderful people. The little girl, she, I think she's about 15 years old now and goes to D Y. This is a very debilitating illness. And a lot of research is being done in the area and they're making a lot of progress at the genetic level. And I can't think really of a better cause for people to support than this. So if anybody wants to give any monies or donations, how do they do that?
They can actually, actually, we're accepting the donations onsite that day. We decided not to go through any social media with, there's a lot of security stuff going on right now. So we decided to go right through at the door. They'll be collecting donations.
Okay, good.
Make a motion, close the public hearing.
Wait a second.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
I just had a basic question. The restaurant itself is fairly large. You have a seating capacity of 130. And why are you choosing to have it outside?
Just in case. So we're going to just, just in case we have the overflow for just, so we're not going to close the restaurant for just the charity event. So we're expecting about 200, 250. So this way, we have enough space for everybody.
Okay.
And also, Peter has to get the license in his name because you can only operate on the licensed premises and the business itself is confined to the inside area. So if there was an overflow, they would have a problem without this, without this extra license. All right? Do I have a motion?
I made the motion. It was seconded.
You made a motion to close the public hearing. Okay. All who's in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed?
Make a motion to approve the application as presented.
Wait a second.
Second.
Okay. All who's in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you very much.
Very much.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
That concludes the hearings on licensing. Madam Chairman?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to vote and sign the annual town election warrant.
I think that needs signed.
So there's a copy in front of you or what the ballot would look like? And then there's a signature page in the blue folder, too.
So perhaps we should go to the other article, the other item on the agenda first.
Okay.
Dan's prepared a warrant article with the full amount of the override here. The vote was taken at the school committee last night. And a letter sent to Dan today leaving the delta and the need for funding still at $546,767. So I guess before we sign it, we have to make sure that it's... I don't think it's in there. It's right there.
No, that's not it.
This isn't it, right here?
Something about...
This is it, right here. This is the warrant. I don't know if you all have it at your place.
It's the ballot, not the warrant.
It's the ballot.
But, well, it's called the election warrant, sorry.
Say it your way. I'll say it the right way.
It's an election warrant. It's a ballot. So I guess the question, first of all, based on our previous discussions, this is the way that the board wanted to go. But before we actually vote to sign it, we should have that discussion first to make sure.
So if we wanted to do something different than what's on there, we would have to at least state whatever the justification is, like if it's a formula-based situation, if we didn't, weren't comfortable with that number. But this was how the number laid out based on past practice related to the student shift.
Well, the $546, is that the amount of the override?
That would be the amount of the override.
And the amount that would be included in our budget is how much?
It would be, and I don't have my...
We don't have, we didn't get a copy of the letter. But last night, the vote, I want to say it was, I keep forgetting because they moved it around a couple of times and then they added debt service, so...
Ed, do you have the...
33...
I think I have the figure.
I'm sorry, what number are you looking for specifically?
The total assessment.
I have that in my computer. Let me look that up.
So basically, we've, this number here, while he's looking at that norm, is last year's number plus the 2.5% we initially allocated, plus the $800,000 that we additionally gave. So it was about 1.3.
Okay. All right. I do have a question about the $800,000. That was the number that was indicated, was the difference due to enrollment change? Can someone just talk about how that number was calculated?
Yeah, Ed can. He has a whole...
So I have everything now. Ed Santio, Finance Director. The way we calculated it is we took, excuse me, the entire D Y. budget divided by the number of students. And I know you have a question about the number of students. And we arrived at $21,004 to educate a D Y. student. So we took that.
Is that including everything, transportation?
That's their entire budget. That's their entire budget of $60,471,135.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so it's 21,000 times...
The 39 students, which is 819. But I think we were using a number of 800,000.
Okay.
Because there are different ways you can calculate this. And the Yarmouth assessment is 33,300... I'm sorry. And that's $2.1 million over what we paid in FY '18.
I guess the only thing I'm troubled with at this stage is, well, there are many things I'm troubled with about this. But ever since I was on the Finance Committee, we've talked about the fact that the enrollment numbers that are used in the calculations are based upon the October 1 enrollment in the schools. That does not include all the students that were financially responsible and that are included in this budget. The $61 million includes approximately 300 and some odd more students. I'm sorry, that number may be incorrect. No, it's about 300 more students under the Chapter 70 calculation. The effect of that difference is significant for Yarmouth. What it essentially boils down to is that we're paying for anywhere between 15 and 20 Dennis students to go to either charter schools or out of district. We're paying for those students. That's the result of the difference in those calculations. And I think it's only fair that we not be responsible financially for Dennis students. And I think that we ought to take the $800,000 down by the number of students, the differential, that results from the Chapter 70 funding versus our enrollment. I think it's bizarre that Dennis argues and continues to argue that we should continue that inequity of paying for their students. And I think that, you know, I'm all for being thrifty. I'm very, very cost-conscious. But being cheap is ridiculous. Being cheap and not being willing to pay for your responsibilities is ridiculous. And I don't agree with continuing to pay for Dennis's students that are going out either to charter schools or to other public districts. And that's part of this $800,000.
Yeah. But the problem is if we take the number down, that just makes simply, the assessment to us is not going to change. So that just makes the override that much more. That's all that does. It's not going to force anybody to pay anything more. While your argument could be accurate, they would have to realign the assessments based on that, on some type of agreement, which they've never, they haven't done.
Right. Maybe they would have to agree to a different allocation of E and D that gives Yarmouth $150,000 to $200,000 of additional E and D with no contribution or no give-back to Dennis for that in order to make up for this differential. But philosophically, I don't see how we can ask Yarmouth voters to pay for Dennis students going out of district.
But that's the way they've been interpreting the agreement, whether right or wrong, for all these years. So it's...
I think it has to come to an end.
Kind of late in the game, though.
I, and I guess what I'm recommending is that we change the override by that number to reflect that fact. If Dennis wants to come up with $150,000 for that differential, fine. I'm using the number 150. I don't know. It's somewhere between 150 and 250, I think. I don't have the precise number right at hand. But, you know, for them to continue to insist that we pay for their students is ridiculous.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to add to that?
That, what Norm just talked about is something that came up in the subcommittee discussions with Dennis. And as I recall, Norm, one of the suggestions that you made was to, one of the proposed amendments to the agreement was to do the allocations before choice and charter numbers were factored out.
Correct.
In other words, have the choice and charter number into the gross number before you divide the allocations. And I think Norm's correct. And I think his logic is sound that...
And Carol agrees, by the way. Carol agrees with those calculations.
Well, it's, yeah. And it's the Dennis people that, I mean, we really didn't get to a definitive position of theirs on that issue. But based upon their response to other proposals, I'm not optimistic that they will embrace that. And hearing Eric, his words echoing in my ears as I speak about not raising the expectation level too high.
In their recent public meeting, just, it was early...
It was last Monday.
Last week. They said that they were not going to agree to change the enrollment numbers. So their philosophy is that Yarmouth should continue to pay for Dennis students going out to charter and tuition.
And that's a serious problem. It really is. Because from the very beginning of the negotiations with Dennis, because the agreement is an archaic agreement and because it is an inequitable agreement, and really, like you said, is a matter of fairness, has to be changed. Every dollar that it's changed by is 100% impact to the town of Dennis because they have such a sweet deal as it is. And therefore, I know Plath was at least quoted in the newspaper recently, Jim Plath from the Finance Committee. He says, "Yarmouth has nothing to give." And I guess in a little sense, he's probably correct. But that goes to your point about being thrifty and cheap, I guess.
Well, I mean, I would add to that. Jim Plaff doesn't consider the fact that we have 60 acres of prime property in the middle of Yarmouth devoted to a school system, which otherwise would probably generate... which otherwise would probably generate between five hundred and seven, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of taxes to the town of Yarmouth. Never mind the services that we provide to those facilities. You know, there's, they totally ignore that. And again, it's a matter between thrifty and cheap. And our partner is being cheap right now.
I don't, well, I don't know, I'd call him cheap, I think, you know.
Unless, unless there's a major change, this override type situation, or some would call it a crisis, is inevitable. Dennis, they'll pass their school budgets like nothing because they always come in under two and a half because they're only bearing about a third of the cost.
Right. I think the discussion points are valid and need further discussion, but in terms of what the school district has to work with and, you know, it's not going to be fixed this year. It, it is a conversation that needs to continue, but they can only do with what they've got, and that's what they have to work with right now. It's our responsibility as leaders to, to work to change that. And I, I think that we need to have a discussion about where we go from here, based on some of those comments and some of those things.
Well, the five forty-six is a calculated number, Tracy, that's why I asked, and the, and the eight hundred thousand of additional responsibility is a calculated number.
But it's based on.
And my thinking is that it should not be thirty-nine students, it should be twenty students. Because we're paying for Dennis's students to go out of district, so we should net out those number of students from that calculation. So it should be twenty students times twenty-one thousand dollars, about four hundred thousand dollars as opposed to eight hundred thousand.
But are we being assessed based on the regional agreement that we have now? Are those students in that shift that we're being assessed for?
They are.
Well, I mean, that's, that's my point.
In part of it, not in all of it. The state, the Chapter Seventy numbers, the Chapter Seventy calculations are based upon the total student count. So it's a mixed bag.
Yeah. And it needs to be addressed, there's no doubt, but I, I don't think that the school even has the ability to shift that back to, to Dennis at this point, so.
Well, the school, the school committee, in, particularly in view of the fact that Carol agrees with our position, the school committee could put forth an amendment.
Well, I think that that's what we need to do, I think based on, I think based on watching the meeting last week and what we saw, I think we need to meet with our school committee members as a group and come up with where we go from here, and perhaps we need to put forward the agreement thus far to the voters directly and speak to the voters. And if we cannot get the voters of Dennis to agree with us, then we need to go in a different direction. But to me, that's the way I see it playing out, but as far as next fiscal year, they can only work with the agreement that's in place right now. Does anybody else have anything they want to add?
I just, you know, I, I agree with everything you said, Norm, but, you know, outside or absent an amendment to the regional agreement, the school's not going to do any. And, you know, Dennis is very supportive of education as long as it doesn't cost them anything. To think that they're going to, just going to kick in extra money because they think that it's the right thing to do, there's no way that's ever going to happen. So while I understand your argument of, you know, taking the value of those ten students out of the eight hundred that we allocated to fund the student shift, I think that you'd have a hard time convincing voters not only that you were right, but that Dennis should be on the hook for more and we should be on the hook for less. And what you do is that you then transfer that amount to the override, which, you know, whether or not you like overrides, you know, we're probably all going to hold our nose and vote for this thing because if it doesn't pass, then it comes back to us and we look at cutting things from the town budget. But transferring that money over decreases the likelihood that it's going to pass. And, you know, I think we've seen a shift, you know, we have certainly done our job over the last few years in being responsible for our, for Yarmouth students. We didn't use to do that. You know, when I first came on the board, the two and a, any budget increase was subject to allocation or appropriation, which means if we didn't have the money, we weren't going to give it to them. But we've since committed, you know, two and a half percent over the prior year's assessment automatically, and, you know, we have since also committed to pay for our students. And then within the last two or three years, we have said that, you know, above our two and a half percent and above the value of our, of the student shift, you know, that amount is going to go to an override. And, you know, it has been, I think, in the, I don't think I've seen a school override fail. There have been years where we tried very hard to whittle it down and eliminate it, and, you know, we were very successful in doing that. There were a lot of meetings, extra meetings with, with Bill, trying to rework the budget at the last minute to avoid any override altogether. But, you know, I, I think we have seen the people of this town be supportive of the schools lately. And, you know, I would at least like to fulfill our obligation to pay for the students, whether or not ten of them are Dennis's, you know, you can argue that all night, it's not going to change anything because Dennis isn't going to voluntarily kick in, you know, two hundred and fifty grand.
My, my point on this is that, and I'm not going to argue against, I, I want to fund the schools properly. But I want our voters, our taxpayers, to know how stinking this is.
Yeah, I think that they do, Norm.
And, you know, to the point that, that Dennis won't even pay for all of its kids. I just think it's ridiculous, and the numbers are what the numbers are at this point. But, you know, the school administration could do something about this. It's within their capability to request an amendment to the agreement and put it before both towns. They have that, that's their right within the regional agreement. They could also, another option for them, as I said before, is to ask Dennis to contribute its portion of E and D funds to cover the tuition being paid for Dennis students that otherwise Yarmouth is going to pay. But none of those options is, instead, is being forced all on Yarmouth taxpayers.
And I.
Like that a damn bit.
I agree with you, but to, to sit here as we're getting ready to vote on the ballot and say woulda, coulda, shoulda, doesn't help us this year. You know, if we want to fight for it for next year, I mean, I think we can come up with an amendment to the regional agreement that would do everything you say and put it to the school committee for a vote, and I, I forget how the process works.
Yeah, and then they submit it to the towns, and I, I think that, you know.
But it should come from them, it could be at our direction, but it has to come from them. But to do it, but to, but to say it should have happened and it should, you know, take effect with this year's budget, I don't think that's fair.
I think we need to start that process because, based on what I watched in their meeting last Monday, they really don't have any appetite for change, and there was absolutely nothing put forward in, in any way of a change, and even specifically said there'd be no change in capital.
You're talking about Dennis?
Yes. So I think that we need to come up with something, or ask the school committee to come up with something at this point and, and put it before the voters, and if the people of Dennis choose not to accept it, then, then we know what we need to know. I mean, I don't, I don't see any other way going, going forward.
And, you know, I, I, you know, I don't want to go off on a tangent, but we're in a very unique position right now of being able to, you know, put on our, our big boy shoes and do something with the opportunity we have to build a new building. Whether or not we want Dennis to be involved in that, I, I think we hold a pretty powerful hand in that game right now. I'm a firm believer that this new building, while it will sting in the begilding, in the beginning, Yarmouth, we, we may want to do it our own, fill it full of Yarmouth students and just say, you know what, Dennis? We'll share the high school, but we're done with you.
Right.
Well, after watching that meeting, it was a little bit frustrating, and, and I know that, that the time and effort that both Mike and Norm put into it, because Eric and I have been in the same situation, and I basically saw the same thing. And at the end of their discussion, not only did Mr. Plath talk about we didn't offer them anything, which was completely frustrating, because initially, I want to reply and say, well, you know, well, why'd you stay so long? Well, obviously, you know why you stayed so long, because we have a lot to offer. We've offered better educational benefits, we offer financial stability, I mean, there's all, there's a whole litany of reasons why being in a regional agreement and being a partner is a good thing. And, you know, so your initial thought is, oh, we know, we need, we need to respond to that. I think that it should have been responded to, I think it should be responded to, but they sat and they don't want to be in conflict or not agreement with their finance committee, so basically, I don't foresee them putting something together. I mean, it's going to be the Finance Committee and probably the Board of Selectment against anything that we put before the voters in Dennis. You know, so you've got two sides, you've got one that says, you know, that's unfair, that he would even say that. And then the other half says, you know, we're in a marriage with somebody who doesn't love us, and we're keeping it together for the family. And we're going to buy another house.
For the children.
And we're going to buy another house with the people who don't want to be our partner.
Time for divorce.
I mean.
Well, I, I'll make another analogy, I like that analogy, I'll make another analogy. Let's say that, that you and I are going to rent an apartment together.
Woo!
I know.
You don't have enough money, Norm.
Tomorrow. You and I are going to rent an apartment together.
Okay.
And so it's got two bedrooms, a nice big kitchen, and a beautiful living area, the big screen TV and all this sort of thing. And we sit down and we say, well, how are we going to split the rent? And it's got one nice big bedroom with a huge closet, I know you'd want that. And it's got another little corner bedroom with, you know, it's about half the size of that big red bedroom. And how are we going to split the rent? All right, so, so the, part of the issue is the bedrooms, how do we split the?
Well, you split it on size, but then you've got the common area, I see where you go.
Okay, we've got the, the living area, and we've got the kitchen, we split that fifty-fifty?
And the utilities.
That makes, that kind of makes sense. The same logic applies to the Station Avenue four to seven school. We should absolutely, based on enrollment, the construction costs should be allocated to the two communities based on the number of students, based on certain portions of that school. But at least half of that school, half of that school is common area. Whether you're talking about supervisory offices, the gym, the cafeteria, the hallways, all those spaces are common spaces. And there ought to be a sharing of those common spaces, just like in an apartment. Now, if you were cheap, you'd, you'd battle me on that.
I'm thinking I'll just take the small bedroom with the big closet, can I get both of those?
And me being a gracious roommate, I might say that's wonderful.
No, but your point is taken, and you've worked hard at trying to make those points, but my point is, is I, I just don't see it moving forward or going anywhere. So we need, we need to make a decision.
We need to move forward on this, I, I wanted to say something that were important based upon the amount of time that Dan, Mike, and myself, and, and the rest of the committee have devoted to the negotiations, and what this, this is just a portion of, of the frustration that we've experienced in dealing with Dennis. And, you know, it's, we'll, we'll have another discussion at a future agenda, but this, it's time that we decide whether we want to live with a, a cheap partner.
If I might, you'll have that opportunity on April twenty-third, we have a joint meeting that night with the School Board and the FinCap.
The twenty-fourth?
It's the Monday night.
The twenty-fourth?
Yeah, I'm wondering if we, though, should have some type of workshop amongst ourselves before we go to the full joint meeting. But it's up to the board to decide however you want to do it, if you want to wait and have a discussion, I'm unsure if that's even, we can't, don't control that agenda, so.
But we can, we can certainly put, request in to put topics on there, topical information on there for sure.
But I'm not sure that, that, I think we, this is a discussion that we, I think, as Yarmouth, needs to decide how, how we're going to move forward and what we want to do, I'd like to do that with our school committee members.
There is a Maticke's School Building Committee meeting tomorrow night, and I think, Norm, your point is very well taken about all these common areas, and I'd also add to that the auditorium, which is a very large structure, as part of the whole common area experience that, that should, we should probably raise that tomorrow night to get a, a cost analysis, that they're far enough along by the square footage now that they could probably give us a breakout on that.
I've run the square footage numbers. I've run the square footage numbers, and a fifty-fifty split on the common areas, combined with the other spaces out, split based on enrollment, would yield a forty percent share for, for Dennis, as opposed to the, what they want is a thirty-one percent share.
Thirty-one percent, right.
And we've put proposals in front of them, and they've said no.
So perhaps it's time for us to bring a proposal to the school committee for them to have a discussion on. But at some point in time, we need to, as a group, look at that, where you're at, specifically on each topic, have, have a discussion and then bring it to the school committee for their consideration to put before the, the town.
Not to have any pressure to this, but, I mean, they are lining up for, in October, presentation, special election or town meeting, however it is they decide, I sent you an email today on.
We'll make sure that that goes first on the warrant.
And we should definitely know, obviously, what the split is on, what the pay is going to be, so.
What is the board going to do?
We can have our own items on that. If we have a special town meeting, we could have any number of additional items that we chose to have in there. Any kind of votes with regard to the, our participation in, in the regional district.
Does anybody, does anybody have any direction, any help that they can offer?
Well, I need to excuse myself, but I'd like to vote on this before I go.
Okay.
Again, you know, like I said, it's, don't disagree with anything that's been said, but.
We're not, we're not saying that we agree with this, we're just saying this is what the ballot should look like.
Right, we don't have to take a position on it right now, we have to, we have to print the ballot with a number.
I'll make a motion, we print the ballot as presented to us.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that solves the, both vote and sign the annual election, make sure everybody signs it in the packet, and then our option. So because Eric needs to leave, we have asked, we're going to put off.
Assignments?
The assignments.
You have in your packet, I'm not sure if you do, I have the assignment list from last year, do you have that?
No, we always alternate those, though.
Do you want these from last year?
We don't usually stay, stay with the same ones or the same grouping.
Again, I, I too need to excuse myself, but if you want to do them, I mean, I don't.
We can wait, we have.
So we can wait, we did it the last.
We have time.
That's fine, it's just a matter of.
I just wanted to get it on there to give it some time to think about it.
Yeah, we have time, that won't take us long to go through at a future meeting, so.
Good, thank you.
Okay. So upcoming agenda review.
Well, so if you wanted to have like a workshop meeting.
I, I feel like we should, but I, I'm waiting to hear from the board what they want.
I think it's important for us to identify the range of options that we have and have a thorough discussion of the implications of each one of those options. It may lead us then to ask for more information, but until we flesh out the options, I think that we're all kind of all over the place and, and, you know, and I think that that's, we've got to deal with that. So for me, even if we had a, a workshop for part of a meeting, I mean, can we do that, can we have?
Well, we could, except for if you wanted to get prepped in time to present something on the twenty-third.
Well, it might give us some bones for discussion, at least to let them know what we're thinking.
Do something next week, right.
Yeah, we can have a workshop within our regular meeting. We can have.
We, we don't have a regular meeting between now and the twenty-third though.
What's today? I don't even know what day it is. Today's the tenth, right? So the seventeenth we don't meet?
Seventeenth is uh, no me, it's a holiday.
Is, is.
It's tax day.
It is also.
That is no holiday.
Tax day.
The twenty-third is that?
Yeah, the twenty-third is Monday.
Yep. Is, is the seventeenth the actual holiday or is it the sixteenth?
Oh, the uh, that's a good, I believe it's the sixteenth.
I mean.
It's the, it's the school vacation week.
Yeah.
Sixteenth is the Monday. School vacation week is uh, that week, so that's typically a.
I mean, we, we traditionally avoided meetings on those.
Holiday weeks.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm available.
I'm available as well.
Dan, are you away that week?
Actually, no, I'm, I'm here that night. Actually, there was another meeting scheduled on that night. Uh, but if we did it like at uh, six-thirty, I think I'm meeting with the golf membership that night.
Okay.
It'd be like, it's like a four-thirty to six thing or something.
So we could even do seven?
Yeah, you could do seven.
I mean, we could have a seven o'clock. Is that acceptable to everybody? Seven PM on the seventeenth and we'll just have a workshop, just to.
Flush this stuff.
And I, I personally would like to have our school committee members present. It's up, it's.
Could uh, I could know if I, sure, yeah.
Seven PM on the seventeenth?
So seven PM or six PM?
Let's do seven. That way Dan has time to finish up his other meeting. I don't think it would be more than an hour, so. Norm's gonna come in with a, with a file cabinet.
No, 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 no. I, you know, I, I think.
I think most of the, we know, we've identified the significant issues that need to be addressed, I think for the most part. Is that, are you available on the seventeenth, Mark? Okay. Mike?
Yes.
All right, so then we'll post a meeting for the seventeenth, the seven PM.
Seven PM.
And yeah, we'll invite the school committee members, the Yarmouth school committee members, yes, please. I mean, it's a public meeting. The rest of them can come, but, all right. So as far as the upcoming agenda review, that takes care of that.
So then we would have on the, it would be the twenty-fourth where we'd talk about the assignments?
Yeah, twenty-fourth would be, uh, we'd assign assignments for the town meeting, yeah.
Perfect.
Twenty-fourth also, um, it's not on here, but we're gonna put um, the uh, Bass Hole presentation that um, we saw like a preliminary on yesterday as part of uh, the presentation on the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
We might wanna consider on the twenty-fourth a five o'clock start, just uh, the Bass Hole program should be like forty-five minutes. I'm not sure what the drive-in site, how long that might take, but that could go kinda long. That's their full unveiling after all this time.
Yeah, we better go with five. Does that work, Mark?
What day is this?
The twenty-fourth.
Fair, fair number of people here too. Yeah. That's not, that's not really, is it a hearing? I might be about fifteen minutes late, but that's fine.
It's not a, it's not a hearing. It's just their findings. Okay.
I'll likely be moving that tree warden. We're not as far along with that. As we would hope that this time, I think that'll end up being the last meeting in May and that'll be coupled with the Barnstable Water Inter-Municipal Agreement.
Well, that's a good time.
Barnstable later in um, what, early May to iron out some of those issues.
The public hearing on the licensing rules should be rather brief. There's not really many changes. Um.
So do we wanna, I don't wanna confuse people with the time changing all the time. Do we wanna start at five-thirty then?
Um, it's up to you. I mean, like, I can schedule things on there so that the public hearings can still go off at a normal time at like six if you want it.
Maybe we'll do the change, we can do the change of manager first maybe and then Mark won't miss 'cause he's gonna be a few minutes late. Okay.
You wanna start at a five-thirty or?
No, we'll start at a five. We'll just put the change of manager. That's usually um, just pretty procedural. Okay, individual items. Mike?
Said my piece.
Mark, you haven't said much tonight.
I think it's all been said.
Okay.
Um, I do not have any individual items for tonight.
Okay, well, we are just moving right along. Consent agenda.
There's um, some usual items on the consent agenda, donations, entertainment license application for the Easter services, uh, beachside services, I believe, and uh.
That's kinda passed. That was the last agenda.
I think that they had on there though, the Saturday sunrise media uh, services were also as part of that as one application, I believe.
I thought that was the last.
Yeah, Easter was passed.
Yeah, I thought that was in the last one.
Okay, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Any discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Town administrator updates.
I gave you an email update. We had the conversation with MSBA yesterday about Emmy Smalls and I know Kurt's in the room. So uh, just to overview that, if we had wanted to do something with Emmy Small, we'd have to pull our application from Matta Keys, reoriginate it, request a pre-K essentially through grade seven solution, which obviously is not preferred way of doing things. That being said, the district did submit a no, a statement of interest to advance a Station Avenue school addition and renovation. That, those closed on Friday, April sixth, so that actually is the starting point now. Then the question is, would they ever consider two school projects at the same time? The answer, the short answer is, it could happen. You're competing in a highly competitive environment for very scarce dollars. They reject eighty-five percent of all applications every year. That being said, if you were to uh, get selected, then they look at the local community's ability to pay, which is another hurdle. Um, so the short answer is, is Smalls now because of the Station Avenue, S L, SOI is on their radar screen. It's in the system. When it's gonna get funded, I don't know. Uh, but it help, well, it will now go in year after year. Nothing stops you from doing something on your own though, for sure. Um, they did make that clear. And then as far as administration, there's been some conversation with the Matta Keys building site to move the administration building into the new building, so they're gonna ask the school department to uh, do a analysis as to what the cost was. Did you look at other options to be able to do that? It's a non-participating cost, means the MSBA isn't paying for it, so it completely gets borne by the, by the um, two towns to, to do something with the administration building. There was, I did discuss, I mean, could you do a private lease with a uh, class A or class B office space? Certainly could do that to cut down costs and that'd be an analysis you could look at if there was available office space to consider for school administration. So, so you see, sometimes you get presented like this is what we gotta do, you know, because it makes sense to school administration, but the reality is there's a lot of different ways you could go down that road, so.
I'm a little confused on the moving the administration building. Are they saying that they wa, requiring that?
Their MSBA is not. Well, they're, what they're asking before they'll.
Is it the architects that are, that are proposing that?
Uh, I, I think the, the, is, the facility itself that they're presently in is in really rough shape. So the theory came down to, there's no better time to, if you're gonna build something like this, to put it all out to bid as one project, but it's gotta get approval through the MSBA in that it's their money that's attached to putting out this project, a good chunk of their money. And so they wanna make sure before it gets assigned to that, that the district looked at other alternatives and what the cost effectiveness is and then also understand that none of it will be reimbursed by this MSBA.
It was part of the original statement of interest from the district.
It was.
It was, yes. It included the uh, administration building.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yep.
And those classes are never eligible.
That's what they intended from the start.
So.
How can that even be? Because we talked about, we started this feasibility study.
It's in the state documents that were filed with the state.
But originally we were just doing Matta Keys. So they wanted, they were gonna move the administration over there?
That's what the uh, statement of interest says.
Huh. There's no, there's no requirement for the towns who, who are in the district to be notified of any, of the statement of interest?
Not in this way this is set up because it is the regional autonomous school district. Actually, there was a document that came across my desk the other day and the question was whether or not it was a signature document for advancing the next project to the chief executive officer. Now, if you were a single sole district, it would be the authority at the community that was that person. But in this case, it's the superintendent serves that role and signs off a superintendent and the chair of the school board, whole thing, so.
The wording, I've done a lot of reading on that.
Huh.
All the documentation from MSBA and it's very carefully worded with regard to uh, agreement of district officials. Nothing having to say with uh, town officials. So once, once the purse string was opened with regard to the feasibility study, then it was up to the district officials to do what they wanted.
And that's why I think that April twenty-third meeting is at a critical point because what does the financing or what does the strategy look like that they're gonna use to get it presented to the towns to pay the bill? That's what I've asked to be put on the agenda, is what's their plan? It should be brought up at that point to discuss how they're gonna go about setting the bill, so. On another note, the, I'd like to just uh, bring to your attention, I was invited to go to a surprise ceremony the other day in uh, two of our family's own. Carl and Amy Van Hone were recognized for twenty-five years of service to the Barnstable County Rabies Program by the National Fish and Wildlife Service, so they uh, came down and presented some very nice plaques uh, to Carl and Amy for the dedication all these years because uh, what's interesting about that was that uh, the uh, rabies is about ready to be, I think declared to be pushed off to the other side of the canal. So it, uh, very good news and uh, a lot of that good news, it was a huge team effort all these years to, to be on it, but it was nice to be invited to a ceremony where federal government uh, recognized two of our own, so for all the dedication.
Congratulations to them.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I'll also let you know, we did get notified about um, a couple of things on insurance. So um, the final storm remediation repair work that needs to be done on the first floor, we have in hand the final payment for that. We just now have to pay the, have the contractor come back, finish it off and uh, and then downstairs, the finish work is being done by Dick Court and his staff and they're doing a great job down there. So that's uh, putting a finishing envelope on that. And then the second part of that was the IT damage. We were awarded two hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars for uh, to do something with the IT infrastructure, what that server solution is, so we'll be working with a consultant to, to come up with um, the path forward uh, to um, have virtualization of servers and some redundancy. So that was really good news uh, to get backed up to that degree. The sheriff's department with coordination with Carl was able to get the Bray Farm Boardwalk back together. And then secondly, the Bass Hole Boardwalk, uh, the RFP Request for Proposal Document should be finalized very shortly to be put out onto the street for bidding and we would hope that we have some respondents. And then we'll go from there with the deadline. Hopefully that will get it done by July one, so.
So how's that gonna be funded?
So uh, CEDC uh, provided a grant to the town to do both the Bray Farm, which we saved a ton of money on because of sheriff's contribution and also I think the number for uh, Bass Hole was like seventy-eight thousand or something like that. So they underwrote it. I think the total was about a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars to do the repair work. So we're hoping to do the same kinda thing um, with Bass Hole that there's a certain amount of work that has to be done by dock company because of the driving of new piles. But we're hoping that once those are set and the stringers are set up, we can come back with the sheriff's department staff or some other alternative to do the decking and the side rails. So um, we should, hopefully that, that'll be underestimated.
So all the money's gonna come from the CEDC for that Bass Hole, other than what the sheriff's gonna help out with?
And there's no appealing to the insurance company?
That's it. They're the final arbiters on that, yeah. Yeah, so I mean, you know, it's one of those lessons where you, you, you know, you're building an environmentally sensitive area at your own risk and they, they rate these things and craft them pretty well now that uh, it's harder and harder. I think that the only benefit would've been if we had had a, a national declaration. Uh, there might've been some opportunity through FEMA reimbursement, but our county did not qualify for enough damage to get a national declaration.
Did um, did anyone look into whether going forward, those structures are insurable or not and if so, what cost?
So Bray Farm is not insurable. They do not write policies like that anymore. And this one is uh, um, it is continued under the same very strict limitations, so.
What is the cost to just put a platform at the end where it is now?
Oh, I don't know.
Cause it used to be longer. I mean, when I, it's, it's been shortened already.
Yeah. I think the problem with doing anything different than what we're doing is it's the permitting issue in a salt marsh area, so it's okay to go back and replace what you, what you lost, but to do anything different than that, that would be problematic, I think. Yeah.
Okay, any other updates?
No, actually that was some big news that came to us last weekend a lot of front, so that was good.
I still think we need to set up a GoFundMe page.
Motion to be there.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Alls in favor? Any opposed?